And finance and administration, since this impacts rates, uh, capital expenditures, reserves, all the things that normally finance would look at. And that we would work with public works committee on that. Uh, as we sort out all these big plans that we have to address.
So on that, you cannot have both committees working together or else you have a quorum?
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about coordinating our work.
Thank you. Um, council member Schaefer. You're on mute, council member.
Thank you. Uh, just to kind of reiterate what the council member Lingle was talking about. I would be very interested in having a focused, uh, discussion on how we want to treat GFCs going, going forward. Obviously, any infrastructure item, I think is fair game as far as, uh, GFCs are concerned. And we need, I think, maybe a more consistent philosophy, uh, towards, uh, how we want to treat those going, going forward. At least that's, you know, that's what I, I see and, and, you know, a more, uh, focused discussion by the council, I think would be, uh, well, uh, you know, well deserved for that. As far as the comprehensive water plan, uh, first of all, I want to say, uh, it truly is comprehensive, comprehensive. It's a very excellent plan. It goes into much more detail. I learned a lot just by, by looking through the plan and I don't claim I read every single page, but, uh, it, uh, was very, a very good education, uh, for me. So thanks, uh, thanks for that. Just a couple of, a couple of comments and questions. Um, Sean, I think me, I might've missed this, but I think figures two dot, two dash one and two dash two were missing. No big deal because I, I, I saw that in other slides, but just for the completeness of the plan, we ought to include those. Then in, uh, section, who, what was this? I think it was section two dot six, the, uh, tele, tele, telemetry concern, the supervisory control.
Tree.
Telemetry, thank you. The supervisor control, we currently don't have that. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I, I just killed my video because my connection's been unstable. So hopefully this will iron that out. But yes, uh, so currently we, we have uh, pieces of a telemetry and SCADA control, uh, network in place. Uh, a lot of them have been non-functional, non-operational. So we, part of the CIP was just to, to begin anew, which we'll work on.
E- exactly. Yeah. And I'm not sure, I, I know you have very detailed priorities and I'm not sure where that falls as far as the priorities are concerned. But that certainly seems like a higher priority item to me, uh, to have that, uh, in place for, you know, monitoring and safety concerns. It's, it seems to me we ought to have a, a, you know, well-working, uh, system that we can monitor remotely.
And I know Sean can't see us, so I'll jump in real quick. So council member Schaefer, we are in the process of procuring that. We worked on that design last year. It is a very interesting, uh, procurement procedure. And I will let Sean touch on it. We've been working over the last like month and a half with legal. So it's fairly intellectual in nature. It's fairly industrial in implementation. So equipment-wise, uh, it's not a clear week. We could spend, you know, as much designing a system as we will implementing. So we're trying to balance, uh, the intellectual property relative to the physical installation of the features. And I know Sean maybe jumped in on, on what that means moving forward because we're kind of stuck in a real strange place. I'm trying to get it bid and implemented because it's so intellectual, but go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, and that was, uh, so we, we went through the exercise of, not the exercise, but, uh, the effort of doing a SCADA master plan for the whole system. So we had, uh, you know, experts in the field come out and take a look at everything we had and hey, do we have anything in place we're salvaging or not? And really ultimately it was a not. And so we have a, a brand new system really designed and envisioned. And now it's just a matter of, well, how do you procure that service for installation in the correct way? Because it, it spans, one is a telecommunications and electronic data, uh, RCW or DMC. And it also spans a public work in some ways, but also a consulting service. So, uh, the attorney, we all looked at it in a few different ways and have some recommendations about how to move forward. Uh, with like a request for proposal. And again, uh, a lot of this is also proprietary in nature, right? So one company has one way of doing it, another one has another way. So it's very difficult to, to competitively bid as well. So we're trying to wind our, the correct way to a, a successful outcome on that.
Sure. Good. No, thank you. And, and anything I can do, I mean, I, I obviously I'm part of the public safety commit or po- public works committee, but anything I can do to help there, I'm glad to. So, so thanks for that.
Yeah. And, and to your original point, that is a very high priority project. We would be under, right now if we could have figured out how to do this faster, but we've just been stuck doing other things currently.
Understood, yeah.
Any other, um, thoughts? Council member Ben Nicky and then council member Hope.
Uh, yeah, I think this would be a question for Steve in regards to the GFC. Which is the fees that when we calculate that, can you remind me if we have to do some sort of study? Or is that, I, how do we figure that out? I feel like in the past, we had to do a study to determine what the fee was going to be, um, that we couldn't be arbitrary, you know? Whatever we wanted. So could you, could you just, um, refresh my memory on that since it's a topic that's come up a few times?
Yeah. So we, we, you, you may have heard John or Togi touch on the relative amount of our capital program that is attributed to the GFC. And I wrote it down. I think it was fifty-six or fifty-nine percent dot, which one?
Um, hold on, I, the GFC was fifty-nine percent, yes.
So a- as we try to roll our, and taking one step back too. Water and sewer and storm utilities operate very differ governmentally as specified via RCW. They are, the operation and the capital side for each type roll up into one waterwork fund, they call it. So certain things are eligible for operational with fees, certain things are operational for GFCs and vice versa. So they really look at the system. You can't just take a growth thing and pay for it with grow, I mean, without growth, but they, they blend a lot simpler than the streets one-on-one fund and the streets three-on-seven fund, right? Growth-related projects, whammy, growth only, right? So we, we can't have much more flexibility to push and pull on how we balance that. So the four-on-one and the four-on-seven are the, the funds for water. Um, and lucky for me, I have that popped open. Operationally speaking, you know, you pay for wages, benefits, those types of physical existing assets, people, you know, with your rates. Uh, some of the rate structure does go into system improvements, you know, water main upgrades that maybe aren't growth-related. But we push everything we can. If we have an eight-inch pipe, that's, you know, needing to be a twelve-inch pipe, you know, the fair share of that is going to go to capital. So everything we can push, and again, we really pushed Togi. Hey, you know, it's really important. We keep rates as low as possible. We know council wants rates lower than they are. You know, there's, there's no hiding that. So can we push more onto the capital side? And, and Togi was pretty adamant, like, you're pretty low on your utility rate share of your capital improvements. Like, we push as much as we can. Every, every, you know, surface area, volumetric area of the pipe network that we can attribute it, we will. Every pump capacity, like if we have a fifty-force pump and we need to go to seventy-five and you know, efficiencies take this and, and that, we will push every, everything we can onto the development growth share. And, and knowing sometimes, yeah, that, that whole system is a growth share. So, um, numerator and denominator, right? The denominator is the amount of capacity or people we have left coming in. The numerator is the, the amount of work we can attribute. So that's really what drives our GFC. And we had them look at it and it's, since it has been indexed. I think the last meeting, I don't know if it was one of our staff meetings with G, with FCS group or not, but uh, Lake Forest Park, who I have, uh, the pleasure of being a former coworker and, and colleague of, they went through a, I think it was over a hundred percent increase in their GFC. Because they hadn't done any annual escalators, which we have been doing. Ours are indexed, uh, two-year rolling average CPIU, um, for rates. So I guess that's a, a little bit of a scattered answer. I'm not sure I helped you, but we, happily speaking, we, we roll as much as we can to the four-on-seven fund. And we do transfers and Dana is, you know, certainly making sure we push as much as we can off of rates onto the capital because there is a, a rate portion that transfers over into the capital program, which is a four-on-seven fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
That is helpful, Steve.
Council member Hope.
Oh, um, council member Lingle brought up a really good point that, um, I, I feel like this water comp plan falls under two different committees, really. It, it falls under the public works, but it also has financial impacts, especially if we're talking about increasing reserves. I just think that both committees could benefit from digging deeper into it, but I don't know how to do that. Does that mean we have to have a workshop for the whole council? Or just, just my thought.
Thank you. Council member McHenry.
Yeah, um, council member Hope brings up a good point, and I think this rolls into a bit of us talking about updating procedures. But that if there is something that more than one committee, uh, could be looking at because it just overlaps in a certain way, then to me it makes sense for the whole council to look at it.
Council member Lingle.
Yeah, I think, um, I think there's probably two stages to this because this is, you know, these big systems changes, super important, super important that we do them very well. And, you know, there's, when I think about, uh, the water comp plan, I can see very much that there is a very technical, uh, discussion that goes on in public works. That really finance, uh, needs to be, uh, informed about. But then we take that information from, we don't have to be in the same meeting. We take that information and then we can sort of think about it in the, the larger context. And then by coming all together in a workshop or whatever we want to call it, would really be perfect because then separately, no problems with, uh, too many council members, but we would be looking at individual components and then having the still the, uh, the blended opportunity. It could, that's, that could be one way. And, and that would mean that a cut, like a, a finance committee wouldn't necessarily have to go back and sort of reintegrate it into something else that we're seeing because we are took, looking at two major water-related components that have not just capital needs, but also rate increases. And, um, even though those changes may be pretty incremental, you're, you're still talking about, you know, annual increases in both of those for, for fees. And, um, I, I don't question that public works and administration overall are looking for ways to be sure we're paying for growth. I, I, I never really worry about that so much. It's more market tolerance for those charges when I think about it. But, um, all the technical stuff about systems and you know, capital improvements, which roads and how they're doing that, I don't think that's something personally that needs to go to finance. We just kind of need to know where we are relative to budget and future projections.
Thank you. Mayor Pratim Remington.
Thank you, mayor. I'm actually on both committees, so I'll tell each one the secret from the other side. I actually think we're doing just, just what we should do tonight. Um, the public works committee realized that these were an important item for us as a city and for council and to bring this forward so that everyone on council would have a chance to take a look. I think the point that, uh, council member Lingle and others have made is, you know, they do cross over from time to time. Uh, it's not unusual in legislative groups that committees, uh, different committees, uh, want to talk about the same thing even. And, and just to understand it, uh, our, our goal is to try to simplify this as much as we can, but, uh, I'm pretty confident we'll find that balance. Uh, there's certainly nothing a committee can't ask about. Uh, Steve's been real good about attending both those and I'm, I'm sure that, uh, he'll be keeping everybody informed. At the end of the day, what I wanted to emphasize is that, you know, when you're doing a water comp plan, the whole council needs to vote on it, needs to look at it, need to understand it. So that's why we bring it to the Cal and, and talk about it. Steve's been real good to answer our questions. Um, so hopefully we can just find that balance, uh, working between our committees. And certainly updating our procedures. We can even include some things that identify exactly how do you work through this? If two committees both want to talk about them and have some input. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, if there's, oh, council member Ben Nicky.
Um, I would agree with council member McHenry that if there's, uh, deeper concern or deeper research on the topic, that really the best way to go about it would be to bring it to the Cal versus splitting it between two committees. Um, that, that would probably expedite, uh, information faster and, uh, just be a better method, I think. So.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, oh, uh, Director Lenishewski.
Uh, so it just, I think I get a vote, Cal, because please recall when this was done, this was scoped one way and now we are in committees, which is fantastic. So you might get more staff, not consultants. Because we only have so many meetings kind of prescribed. Uh, so I know, I'm sure Sean was hoping to say something. I'll be the bad guy. Uh, we can add that and see what we can work in if we, we do need to get to that type of discussion. And maybe if we, you know, maybe, I don't know, figure out what explicitly each group may want to see. Um, I know when we talked about, uh, what I heard, for example, on reserves, right? I would love to have a reserve policy that explained why the number is the number. Uh, that's pretty, pretty straightforward. I think we all would agree with that. So breaking out what group, uh, sets what isn't a huge issue. Just understand my concern is whatever consultant support we do need, that might be over and above our current scope would be, you know, a problem in one way or another, mostly financially usually. But, uh, that's just what I want to bring forward and I don't mind, uh, regular discussion out of Cal and going from there, but I don't know. Maybe we started a Cal and then piece it apart and see what goes where. And then, you know, maybe that will help us as staff decide what we do need consultants for, how and when, and how we can align them within maybe the budget we have. We, you know, we're under contracts.
Yeah. And, and mayor, if you don't, if you don't mind, to, to Steve's point, that's, that's kind of where I'm going as well. I think that we're going to try to shoulder as much of this as we can. Because I think we can carry it a long way. And I'd really want to try to be judicious with our use of those consultants. And so if we can really flesh out what major topics are, and I was taking notes the whole time you guys are talking. So I've, I have some bullet points that we can kind of align back to. But yeah, if we, if we can really flesh out where, where the points of contention are, or, or points that, that we don't have any concerns about, that we don't need to waste any more time talking about. You know, those are all useful, uh, things for us to focus our, our messaging and get, you know, tailor you guys the information that you're looking for. Make sure we're really focused like a laser instead of shotgunning the entire plan when maybe all you're concerned about is, is certain sections of two chapters. You know, and I think that's really kind of what I'm hearing from, from a lot of you is, is, you know, some of that operation maintenance and the capital portion. A- and maybe not as much as the land use projection that I initially thought. So I, I think you guys are more tailored on the backend of the plan than you are the, the, it doesn't sound like you're worried about water system demands or analyses, those type of things. It's, it's really about, you know, dollars, understandably so.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for the extra time tonight, Mr. Tozer. Um, so if there's no further, uh, questions or comments on this, we'll move on to our presentation this evening. We have our Waste Management Annual Report with our representative Marcy Nanabuson from Waste Management.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you so much. Let me just, um, get the PowerPoint up for us. Is that working?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Um, so good evening, mayor and council, and staff members of the public. It's so great to be here with you this evening. Um, hopefully we're through the worst of snow again in twenty-twenty-one, but, um, you know, we are prepared, um, to, to service. So let me get into our annual update for twenty-twenty. And the city of Duval. So obviously twenty-twenty, the big thing was COVID. Um, and, you know, I really just want to highlight that, um, our collection services were on time and on schedule throughout the pandemic, which, uh, we're very proud of. In a, in a year where nothing was really normal, uh, one thing that Duval residents and businesses could count on was our truck showing up on Fridays, right? Um, and, and as we have done for decades in the community. So, um, the men and women we had running out of, uh, our Woodinville office took really great pride in being able to perform the essential services and give folks kind of that small peace of mind. Um, and as a company, we really focused on these three, um, items that are on the screen now, which is, you know, serving our communities, having that uninterrupted service. Um, we saw with people working from home and being home more, um, increased residential volumes and decreased commercial volumes, as you might expect. Um, supporting our customers, so being available to adjust services. Again, people being at home may need to increase or add services. And for our, uh, small and medium businesses needing to reduce or, or close service. So, um, you know, really being available. Also, we didn't, um, turn off any services for customers that, you know, maybe couldn't make payments, um, or charge any, uh, late fees as well. So you know, really doing our part to support customers and then protecting our, our WM family, which certainly is the third point here, but not last, um, in our priorities. So, um, and that came straight from the top. Um, our CEO made a commitment right away not to lay anybody off, um, or, and to guarantee that we had forty hours of pay, um, all right from the start of the pandemic. So it allowed us to focus on serving the communities and, uh, supporting our customers. Um, and we also, so we have forty-five thousand employees across North America and we transitioned, uh, twenty thousand of those to working from home. So no small feat accomplished there. Um, of course, when we talk about our annual report, we talk about tonnage and diversion. So that's what we do. We pick up the garbage and the recycle and the organics. Um, so you can see those numbers on this slide here. And really we're about, uh, pretty close to fifty percent, fifty-point-three percent diversion, meaning half of the material waste, uh, generated in Duval was not sent to the landfill. It was recycled or, uh, turned into compost. So right on pace with where we've been at in the community. Um, and then like you, you'd expect the garbage tons were up just a little bit in twenty-twenty with people being at home. Um, and on the topic of diversion, wanted to talk about recycling. So in twenty-twenty, recycling was recognized as an essential, central service along with garbage. Um, it provides valuable feedstock for supply chains and packaging. We're all at home ordering from Amazon and all those things that we need, um, the recycled material to provide that packaging. And, um, also used for toilet paper. So I mean, that by itself is a great reason to recycle. We know that was a shortage. And then, um, along those lines, you know, keeping recycle clean and free of contamination is even more important because of the role our curbside material plays in the supply chains. And we saw new materials such as face masks and gloves, all those PPE things that we've been talking about, um, which are not recyclable. So we've, uh, been pushing out messages and kind of reminding customers of what is and is not recyclable. And, um, as we talk about that messaging and education, I mean, here in the Puget Sound, um, we get those messages out better than anyone else. Our team here was the recycler of the year in twenty-twenty for innovation. Um, and that award was given by the WSRA, which is the Washington State Recycling Association. So, um, yeah, we do a really great job of that here in the Pacific Northwest. So knowing that we couldn't be visiting businesses on Main Street like we did last summer and many summers before, or, um, you know, hosting our education booths at Duval Days or the farmer's market. Uh, we actually created an outreach program, uh, for businesses and residents called WME Connect. And that's what we're seeing here on the screen. So we provided consultations for businesses and multifamily properties. Sharing videos and scavenger hunts and, uh, came up with all these creative ways, uh, for people to learn about recycling in the method that suits them. So whether you're on the go or you're able to join a presentation, Zoom call, things like that. So even though we couldn't meet with folks in person, that didn't mean education and outreach went away. And our team did a really fantastic job of pivoting in the virtual world. And one of the most heartwarming things I'd say about twenty-twenty was the uh, tremendous appreciation and support that the community shared for drivers. We saw, as you can see the pictures here, um, messages on carts, in sidewalk chalk and windows. Um, I mean, just all kinds of great stuff. So I wanted to share just a, a couple of comments, um, that I came across from our Duval residents, just thanking our drivers for their great work. Um, and then as we look ahead to twenty-twenty, um, you know, just wanted to give my thanks and, and appreciation for, uh, the new tenure contract that we'll be starting here in twenty-twenty-two. So, uh, very honored and excited to continue that partnership. I will be working with Mr. Lenishewski and Ms. Wykoff to get an implementation plan to them very soon. And we'll be, uh, ready to get rolling on that. So uh, of course, we'll continue being in the community, um, with the chamber, education and outreach. We'll see how events shake out, but would love to be able to, to join the community for those as well. And that is my update for the evening and I'm happy to take any questions, uh, if anyone has any. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Marcy. Um, I see council member Schaefer's hand up.
Thank, thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate Waste Management for seamlessly working, uh, through the whole pandemic and providing service to, uh, Duval. I know, I certainly didn't see any hiccups, uh, at all through, through all of that. Waste management actually did a couple of special things for me personally, like when I forgot to put my trash out one morning, I called up and boom, I showed up ten minutes later to, uh, pick it up as a special pickup for me. So all of that is much, much, uh, appreciated. Um, a question about the, the contract. And Marcy, I guess I'll direct this at, at you. Is that a new contract? Or is this an existing contract that we're already, the Waste Management's already serving under? Can you help enlighten me on that? I'm a, I'm a new council member, by the way. So I, uh, I, I haven't been involved with this in the past.
No problem. And, and great to meet you, council member Schaefer. Thank you for the question. Um, so we went through, um, an RFP process last year with, um, uh, the city and, uh, through that process, we were selected, uh, for the new contract. So right now, our current contract goes through the end of December of twenty-twenty-one. And then our new contract that was awarded based on that RFP process starts, uh, January of twenty-twenty-two.
I see. Okay. Good. Thank you.
Council member Knopflund.
I just wanted to say how excited I am that the way the RFP was structured to have a fair playing field, it was based on new vehicles, new trucks, and also we would all get all new bins. Is that correct?
Okay, right. Yep. So we'll have, yeah, we'll have new, new carts, um, and everything like that for, for our customers. Yeah. So level setting, they'll have, uh, labels on them and things like that.
Anyway, I thought the public might be excited to know that that is coming.
And weekly yard waste year-round. So yay, this is the last week you won't have, uh, yard waste pickup and then we'll be at every week.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Marcy? Uh, Mayor Pratim Remington.
Thank you, mayor. Marcy, just want to say thanks. I, I think it's great service. We've gotten to know some of the, uh, drivers that come around. I'm always amazed to watch how efficient they are. They, you know, without, we, we're in a cul-de-sac without backing up. They make that loop, uh, set the cans right back. And, uh, I watched little kids come out in their porches to watch. I mean, it's just, you know, it's part of our, our Duval family here. And, uh, we thank you for the service that you provide.
Thank you so much for that comment. And yeah, I, I couldn't do what they do. So as far as driving those big trucks around. So yeah, they do a really great job.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you.
See you soon, hopefully.
Yes. Take care.
Great. Um, moving on, we do not have any public hearings this evening. Uh, so we'll move straight to new business. First item is Agenda Bill twenty-one dash eighteen A, confirm Mayor Okerlander's appointment of Laura Bradley to the Duval Planning Commission, position six. A vacant four-year term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. Do we have a motion?
Oh, Mo, Brad Nicky.
I'll second that.
You have a motion by Councilmember Brad Nicky and a second by Councilmember Schaefer. Is there any discussion?
Not not really discussion on my part. I did read the qualifications and she seems to be very well qualified. So appreciate the selection of someone that, you know, that stature.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, Ms. Bradley, if you would like to have a moment to speak, first of all, congratulations on your appointment to the Planning Commission. And if you'd like to say anything to council, please feel free to unmute and you'll have an opportunity.
No, thank you very much. I'm super excited and looking forward to participating. So thank you.
Welcome aboard. All right, moving on to the next item. Agenda Bill twenty one dash nineteen A. Confirm Mayor Okerlander's appointment of John Isaacson to the Duval Planning Commission, Position One, a vacant four-year term ending twelve thirty one, twenty two.
All.
And we approve Agenda Bill twenty one dash nineteen dash A.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that again.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Hoag and a second by Councilmember Schaefer. Is there any discussion?
Same comment, very, very excellent qualifications, I think.
All right, Councilmember Napland.
I'll keep it brief, but I am so thrilled about both of these new planning commissioners. I just had to say that it was very difficult to choose the for the empty council position. And this is honestly the best case scenario that both are now being appointed to planning commission. I'm just completely thrilled.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes and Mr. Isaacson is not online tonight, but echoing the other comments. Yeah, they're both probably some of the most professional qualified first time applicants to planning commission we've had. And I know that they're going to make a great addition to the group. And so I'm definitely excited to see them coming on board. So thank you. Moving on to Agenda Bill twenty one dash twenty A, Contract Open Gov Enterprise Resources Planning Software. This is a first touch for discussion regarding the Open Gov contract that council will be approving in the near future. And we have Ms. Thomas will lead us, but we also have Mr. Andrea Carchato and Mr. Mark Welch from Open Gov here to present tonight as well.
So good evening, Mayor and Council, Laura Thomas. For the record, this evening, we're going to have one of two readings of this contract, just as the mayor had said. The first thing we're going to do is have a short presentation by Andrew Carchato. And I'm not sure if Mark will also be helping out, but he's here as well. And then after that presentation, we'll take questions. And then we can also talk about the Agenda Bill and the contract. And I can share at least one question that we received today after that. So thank you, Andrew, you're on you're on base.
All right, great. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Really appreciate you taking some time here to review Open Gov. So quick introduction, my name is Andrew Carchato, Account Executive here with Open Gov. I'm based out of our headquarters in Redwood City, California, but I work with all of our customers in Washington, Oregon, as well as Northern California. Really excited to share a little bit about Open Gov and the work we've been doing with the staff as well as the RFP Committee. I also do have my colleague Mark Welch on the line. Mark, do you want to give a quick intro?
Yeah, hey, everybody, Mark Welch, solutions engineer with Open Gov. So really helping our perspective and current customers get the most out of tool. Come from a background in local government finance. So recently, I was administrative services director with Ashen, Oregon, and just got so much value out of the tool that I joined the team to help others see that same success. So excited to talk to you guys.
Perfect. So I'll give just a quick overview of Open Gov as well as align to a lot of the goals that we've heard from the Duval staff. And then we'll leave some time for for questions if there are any. So the partnership that we have here that we're proposing here with Duval is really going to be spanning Open Gov's entire platform for budgeting and planning, really improving the budget process and streamlining the budget process from start to finish for core financials. So your GL accounts payable, accounts receivable, HR payroll, as well as utility billing. And then for citizen services, which will be the the digital online portal for residents to be able to apply for permits and licenses, also do all the payments. And then for staff to have a centralized, digitized system to work off of. It's all built on one reporting and transparency platform. So everything in here is interconnected. And so anything that's in the platform can be reported on and then easily shared to your finance staff, department heads, to council, or even out to the public if you'd like. So just to to give a quick overview here of, you know, what our proposed partnership will provide for the city. Here's this five key points, and these were developed really in line with Laura, with Dana, and with a lot of the Duval staff over the last several months. But, you know, the number one here is the centralized ERP, which is completely integrated across all critical city processes, including the core financials, utility billing, permitting and licensing and budgeting. You know, we've heard that staff is located in different offices a lot of the time. You have a lot of systems that need to interact with each other, but currently they're in different silos. So we'll be bringing that all onto one platform where staff will have one place to be able to manage everything. Number two is detailed budgeting and long-term planning. I know this was actually, you know, how we first started talking with the city of Duval, which was after the last biennial budget. We had heard a lot of challenges with completing the budget. Our platform generally offers our government customers around twenty five to fifty percent time savings in creating the budget, as well as enabling a lot of scenario planning, forecasting, the ability to say, you know, if if this happens, you know, how will that affect the budget? Number three, the digital permitting and licensing platform. So I think we had heard that since nineteen fifty six, Duval has been doing everything manually via email, via phone calls, via paper records. So this platform will be able to digitize all those historical records, allow planning staff to have a centralized system of record to track approvals, attracts and track status, and then also provide online self-service capability where residents and developers or anyone else who's looking to apply for a permit or a license can apply online, track it, and then do the payments all online as well. Number four here was robust reporting. So providing reports for department heads, for finance, for council and mayor, if they'd like to have, you know, common updates or quarterly updates on on key reports. And then even if you'd like to share that out with with residents, you can use this to help engage residents or show transparency. And then the last one is is premium support. So really providing the the white glove treatment for our deployment as well as the ongoing support. So the city will have access to a named customer manager, a technical account manager, support, a support line, Open Gov University. But really, what we're what we're aiming to have here is a long-term partnership with the city. You know, someone who we can, you know, really, you know, help take to the digital age, but that that we can also get feedback from. And, you know, Duval will have the ability to help, you know, drive our our roadmap and our improvements to the platform as well. We did notice that this does align with a lot of the objectives that were called out in the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget. I won't go through these all one by one. But, you know, we've heard this from from the mayor, we've heard this from department heads. You know, really a lot of good alignment here on what Open Gov does and and the goals that Duval has for the short term and for the long term. Laura, any anything to add here just about, you know, the alignment to the goals that the city has before I move on to just an overview of Open Gov?
I know, I think that's a good place to kick off to the next step. And then I might have you assist me in one item afterwards, which is really just the clean start and what that means.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Yeah, so for those who don't know who who Open Gov is and what we're about, I'll just give a quick couple minute overview of of our company and our background. So we are based out of Redwood City, California. We are a mission-driven company with the sole goal to power more effective and accountable government. And so with that, we only work with local governments, cities, counties, special districts, a couple of state agencies as well. But really, what we're seeing nationwide is that the public sector is undergoing a pretty large digital transformation. We're seeing this, we're seeing COVID really accelerate this a lot as well. But a lot of technology and local government is typically outdated. We typically see anywhere from five to ten years behind what we see in the private sector. And it causes a lot of challenges for government staff, kind of struggling with outdated technology. We're seeing residents having higher expectations for self-service and twenty four seven service and using online solutions and workforce is really struggling to keep up. A lot of our team actually comes from careers in local government, evidenced by Mark being on the phone here today. But we have staff from all different walks of life, finance, community development, IT, city management, a couple of former council members as well. But really, they noticed this in their day to day and realized that a lot of the technology wasn't really keeping up. They didn't have a lot of really good partners when it came to to technology. And that was kind of the rallying cry for Open Gov was to say, hey, you know, why can't we provide modern cloud-based technology for local governments to help them really run more efficiently, more effectively, and to better engage residents? And so we currently work with about eleven hundred governments nationwide, really providing that modern cloud-based solution to help not only not only help governments be more efficient now, but to really future-proof the investment as well by building our solution all on modern cloud-based technologies. So everything that we offer is is, you know, constantly improving. So we actually make updates to the platform every two weeks or so. We reinvest about forty seven percent of our revenues right back into R and D into the platform. And that's all included to all of our customers, including if Duval were to come on board, all included at no additional cost. So, you know, we really see this as something that's only going to get better as as the years go on. Perfect, you know, just and then, you know, just kind of some high level value in ROI that that our government see. We generally see it anywhere from fifty to seventy five percent less time spent on budget development, around seventy five to eighty percent less time spent on reporting citywide. For permit processing, we typically see anywhere from twenty five to fifty percent reduction in cycle time, especially for those that are coming off of paper-based processes. And then just general efficiencies, you know, helping free up about one percent of of budget for reallocation. And that's, these are just averages from our our customers nationwide. With that, I'll open it up for any questions and Dana, happy to help with any of the the questions that you had as well. Sorry, Laura.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Thanks, I didn't even remember to unmute myself. So, yeah, first of all, I I see this as an absolutely essential step for for Duval. And I know the other council members and the mayor have had the foresight to pursue this and get it, you know, well underway before, even before my time, and I applaud all of them for for doing that. The and and, you know, from what I could see, you know, Open Gov appears to be an excellent, excellent basis for, you know, for us going forward. I want, I got a couple of questions and then a comment, I guess. I I know there's an upfront cost to this, and I I have some understanding of what what it entails to put something like this in place. So I understand it's complex, to say the least. It's a it's a really big deal. My question is, does the upfront cost include digitizing our existing records?
Yeah, great, great, great question. So so yes, so that does include digitizing specifically for the permitting and licensing portion of the the platform. It does include all historical records, so we're able to digitize all of those.
Great. Okay, that's excellent to know, because obviously that's so important for us. And and frankly, the city's just not going to have the bandwidth to do, you know, to do that. So so it's good to hear that that's part of our upfront costs. You mentioned premium support. Now, I assume that's your ongoing support. That's not part of the upfront. That's the yearly, the yearly support fee that we pay, is that correct?
That's correct.
Including your updates that you mentioned as well.
That's correct.
Great, okay, good. And then what about, you know, state or county specific requirements or city, city-specific requirements that we might have? How does how does Open Gov treat those? Does it actually track each state to see what, you know, special requirements a state may have related to this? Or how how does that work?
Yeah, that that's correct. Yeah, so we work, you know, each each state and really each city and each county does things a little bit differently. And so, you know, as a part of our professional services organization, we're we're always kind of keeping on top of these. You know, and part of it, part of it too is is getting some guidance from city staff. Again, every every city does things a little bit differently. So, you know, if we're made aware, we can, you know, take actions to help do, set up for for specific reports.
Good to hear, yeah, no, good, good. And just, you know, ju-just a comment, and this isn't, you know, this absolutely isn't anything against Open Gov, because this applies to any kind of financial accounting platform that we may be going with. And I know, you know, the mayor and council members again are aware of this. This won't be a, you know, a short-term engagement. This is going to be a long-term engagement for us. This isn't something we can afford the time or the money to do, you know, every five years or whatever. It's going to be likely of a long-term, ten-plus years or or longer that we're, you know, that we're with you simply because of the monumental effort it takes to get up and going and keep going on a platform of this of this nature. So so I'm very pleased to to understand the amount of work and the selection process that we've gone through for this. So anyway, thank, thank all of you.
Yeah, thank you. And I think that's a great point that you make. And and part of the reason why, you know, if you talk, I think, to the staff that was involved in the review process, we took a really long time getting everything together. You know, we didn't want to say, hey, you know, we know that we can do this. So, you know, give us a shot. We we really spent hours and hours really scoping this out, really building out a project plan specific to Duval. And so, you know, we're really excited about the the potential to partner with the city.
Great, great, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Brad Nicky.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, after spending a decade watching us arm wrestle with our current situation and wondering all the time, like, what was it costing us for for our struggles with what we were trying to work with? Entire business changed like immediately. And I had to rework all my technology to accommodate and realized how valuable technology is, the investment of it, to really streamline and make things way more efficient. I can't, I can't even tell you like what I was thinking to myself, what was I thinking? Why was I living like a dinosaur with technology and losing money all these years when I could have updated? And this reminds me of like what we have struggled with for years. And it it seems a hefty price, but, you know, it's it's, we can avoid technology and updating our systems and making them current. And in the end, we do, it looks like it's so comprehensive as far as addressing so many issues that we have had in the past. So I just want to say, I'm kind of relieved to see this program and what it offers and what it's going to provide for the staff going forward.
You, Councilmember Lingle.
Oh, I I guess one thing, I'm just going to be happy to be able to get the kind of payroll information I want. But I attended one of your your presentations. But I, I attended one of your, your presentations that we were all invited to where different cities commented on your services. That was very interesting. I'm looking at your website. I actually doubled back and talked to some cities, this is before the RFQ, by the way, that were using your services or had been in some cases for a while. One of the things that I thought was kind of interesting, and so I'm sort of wondering if you could give us, give me a little more of an update on this. It sounded like from one of the presentations in your, your bigger presentation where, and this was in East Coast city, where they were using some of your modules, but they weren't using all of your modules. And so I was wondering if you could tell me a little bit more about that. And then when I talked to a different city after your presentation, what they were explaining to me was that the, the ERP was fantastic. They really were very satisfied with that, but they had not elected to purchase some of your other modules. They felt like they had other options in that. So tell me a little bit about why this overall package and all of these modules are something we should invest in. And so that's the first part of the, the question. I guess the second part of the question is, I, you know, I've been involved in systems transfers and, and know that sometimes, you know, a, a program can have a really, really excellent component. But then other components are, are fine, but they aren't necessarily the best in the industry. So can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. And I'll kind of answer it in two parts. So the first that you had was just questions about governments that utilizes, utilize some of our suites, but not all of them. I think you'll find that's pretty common amongst a lot of governments where you have a lot of different systems that are pieced together and sometimes integrated, sometimes not. And we have the, we have the same. So we have a lot of governments that use just our budgeting suite, for example, or they use just our permitting suite, or they use just our financial suite. And, you know, we, we find that that can provide a lot of value, but we find it's much more efficient to have everything on the same platform. Because when you don't, things are naturally siloed and, and, you know, whether you can get data in from one system to the other or not, there's some work involved, there might be a delay involved. And so really bringing that all together onto one platform, we think is, is, you know, the most efficient way that a, a government can be run. And that's, you know, for, for us at OpenGov, that's, you know, really what we're leading with and is really that, that integrated, modern cloud ERP, which we haven't really seen from a lot of other vendors out there. You know, even if they, they have different modules that are similar to ours, a lot of times we see they're not actually integrated. So that's the approach that we're taking is to really bring this all onto one platform. That, that answered that question.
Thank you. Andrew, Mark, I think our citizens have a, a good idea from your presentation, what we're looking at doing. But could you, I think for the benefit of citizens, talk a little bit about how the cloud-based provides additional security, minimizes some of the threats we always all hear about hackers getting in and locking up the city system and, and holding them for ransom. Just talk a little bit about the stability of the platform as well.
Yeah, great, great question. And I might tag Mark in here to, to help out with the answer. But yeah, that's, you know, if, if you've checked out, if you followed some of the news, I think you've heard ransomware going around a lot of our local governments. A lot of times we find that those are systems that were being hosted by the city itself. And, you know, if you don't have everything updated to the latest version, or, you know, if you just haven't been able to update your servers in a while, which can be common, it, it puts you at risk for ransomware and other types of malware. And so the big benefit of, or one of the benefits of going to the cloud is that we're actually hosted on Amazon Web Services, government-grade security. And so they're responsible for, for updating security on a regular basis, making sure all threats are, are covered. And so for them, if, you know, if they get hacked, all their customers get hacked. And if, if OpenGov gets hacked, all of our customers get hacked. So we're putting a, a ton of resources and dedication into making sure that doesn't happen, which a lot of times we find on a, a city-by-city basis, you just can't allocate the same level of resources. So a big benefit in being able to, to host this in the cloud via OpenGov and via Amazon Web Services.
Thank you.
By the way, I, I don't think I answered the second part of the question.
Well, you know, part, part of it, social security was one, stability of the platform as well. You know, I mean, we, we do have earthquakes in the northwest. I, I assume you have a few down there in California. But, you know, most smaller cities can't afford to have a complete backup to their computer system. We're just trying to keep what we have so that stability to have a backup system and, and, you know, just give us more, not just security, but, you know, something that we can depend on in emergencies.
Yeah, good, good question. Mark, do you want to handle that?
That's a great question. The backup's a big one, right? Because with Amazon Web Services, it's a continuous backup, and then they have security and redundancy in where the backups are. So, you know, maybe what server you're on. Maybe we're on the server in Oregon, but that's being backed up in Texas. That's being backed up on the East Coast. So if an event happened, like what just happened in Texas or in Portland with, with the ice storms and internet going down, you can always call us anywhere where you have, you know, web access, cellular data. You're able to get in and still access your report. So if you think about an emergency, you know, I, I live down in Ashland, Oregon, we had a big fire. Well, you could call up OpenGov and say, hey, we need to process payroll. Here's our data. Will you process it for us? And we can do that for you because it's all web-based. Whereas if it's on your servers, you have to manually go in and do those processes. So you do get a lot of redundancies. And in those emergency situations, we're able to help you, or you're even able to get in and, and still access your data.
Great. Well, thank you for that. I, I did want to mention it looked like Andrew was wearing University of Washington Husky colors. So I appreciate that tonight. Mark, I understand why you wouldn't, being from Oregon, but thank you both.
I, I wish I could say it was planned. It's actually our, our OpenGov polo here.
Oh, oh.
Councilmember Hoag.
So, um, I'm not a tech person, so I'm just really relying on our staff and the mayor to, you know, I guess, tell us what their needs are. And I know they've been really happy with OpenGov. So when I looked at this in our packet, I'm a Realtor, so I'm looking at the contract and I'm looking at, I'm looking at it a lot differently. So I'm not, and I'm looking at the money and how that all works. And so I guess I did contact Laura today to ask her, it seemed like the dollars in the agenda bill didn't match up with what was in the packet. So I was trying to figure out why there was a difference in money. And she said something about a clean start, so I'd like more information about that. But I also am looking at it and saying, as a Realtor, I'm like, well, if we started in April, does it go till April? Or do we prorate one year? And then I'm feeling a little uncomfortable. $241,000 is a lot of money for, like, to give at the time of signing a contract. So I'm thinking, shouldn't, shouldn't it be, because we're not going to be getting a full service the minute the contract's signed. So I'm thinking, shouldn't that be prorated somehow? So I'm just thinking about the money and the, of the contract and that. So those are my questions.
Yeah, great, great questions. And I know Laura, you, you brought this up prior to the meeting. So yeah, good, good catch on the dollar amounts. So just the background on that, when we replied to the RFP, we applied or we replied with an assumed scope. And so our deployment costs are based on the amount of professional services hours it takes the OpenGov team to deploy. And once we were, we were able to work with the team a little bit further, really get a little bit closer on the scope, we realized that it was a little bit over scoped. And so we, we reduced the number of hours that were needed. And that's why the, the cost is different for the current proposal and the original proposal that was in the RFP. Well, remind me the second half. Oh, the proration. Yeah, so this is something I know Dana had actually brought up to me as well offline. And so this is something that, that we're open to discussing. You know, having either alignment to the fiscal year or splitting the, the services payment, so it's not all due upfront. Our, our team is open. It's typically, you know, about 95 to 98% of our customers, they purchase OpenGov by paying the, the services cost upfront as well as the software cost. However, you know, working with the team and we have a, a good relationship with Dana and Laura and everyone that we've worked with, our, our team mentioned we'd be happy to, to split out the services payment, so it's not as big of a hit upfront, if that would be helpful. That, I, I hope that answers the question again. We, we do want to make sure that, that the team feels really comfortable with OpenGov and the partnership as well as the, the commercial cost as well.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Napoli.
Thanks. So I had a, a similar question. And just to go back, I, I was on the selection committee. And, you know, we ended up leaving it up to staff. We felt like there were, you know, the, the two that came down to the end were, were both great. And we left it up to staff. And I know they spent an awful lot of time reviewing. But I'm always risk averse, and so I, I did have some concerns. And partly it's, we will be the first in Washington State, I think, to have, you know, this bundle. And honestly, I, I think maybe the first to have OpenGov install the core financials. It's a, it's a piece that was purchased, or maybe you acquired the company that had had the financials. So I felt a little bit nervous about it. It sounds like you have a really good team, a lot of very experienced people. So it sounds like we're, you know, wanting to take the leap of faith. But I, I think what Councilmember Schaefer brought up is that since we are really, I think, the only who have the core financials and, you know, the payroll that stay in the state of Washington, you know, ensuring that we are up to date with any changes that might happen with taxes or, you know, reporting requirements. I mean, those are all something, you know, the idea that staff would let, you know, you guys know that we have a change. That's a big burden on staff to be on top of everything we might need that might come up. And so I, that's something that I have felt a little bit nervous about. And it sounds like, you know, hopefully there will be a plan to address, to address that. And more, more cities will come onboard, and so we won't be the only one. But to, to follow along with what Councilmember Hoag had mentioned about paying the entire amount upfront, I think what's different is, once again, we're buying a huge suite. And so if you look at the implementation schedule, there are modules that aren't even going to be started to be worked on for a full year. And so we will be paying the annual fees for all of these modules that aren't even begun to be implemented. And so I, I think there was that aspect I felt nervous about. And then the other on the contract where we're paying the entire amount upfront. Typically, when you hire a consultant for an implementation or anything, you pace it and you have milestones. And so, you know, if I look at the implementation schedule, you could see there would be checkmarks and checkpoints of, you know, this was accomplished. You know, there's a payment for this section and there'd be some, I mean, I can't imagine I, hiring a contractor, let's say, to build something and just giving them the entire amount upfront. That's just very unusual. And so that is a concern that I have. And then also in the fine print of the, the proposal, it talks about prepaid hours expire after one year. And so, and then it lists the, the work that's being done as prepaid hours. And obviously, we're not going to be done within a year. And I wouldn't want there to be any technicality of if it isn't accomplished within a certain timeframe that the amount we have prepaid for the work expires somehow. I, I think it's just a technicality, but it, it might be something in the contract to take a look at. Let me just, I wrote a whole bunch of notes. Oh, and then it says that we're scheduled to start, well, at least the, the service on 3-1. And so we would be paying the annual fee starting 3-1. And I don't know, are you expecting to be working on 3-1? I'm not really sure. Two weeks away. It feels very sudden and we haven't even approved the contract. So I would assume that the start date and the date due and everything would align with the actual start date.
That, that's correct.
And then my final question, I wrote a whole bunch of notes. The travel expenses, I don't see that listed anywhere in our agenda bill as an expected cost. And obviously, that's not included. Hopefully, most of it can be done remotely, but I suspect there could be some additional charges. And so I don't know what to expect there. I mean, you, I think your headquarters is pretty far away.
Yeah, yeah, good. These are, these are all great questions. Yeah. And so, you know, the majority of our deployments right now, well, all of our deployments right now are, are being done remote. So there wouldn't be any travel costs. That being said, you know, if, if we were, fingers crossed to, to get out of this soon and you would like some onsite support, travel is paid for by the customer. But any, any travel expenses would be signed off by the city beforehand. So we wouldn't go and then say, hey, you know, gotcha, here's the bill. You would know, you would be able to sign off on any travel expenses that we have before it happened.
So you don't expect any trap, there's no need for your staff to come onsite for any of the implementation plan?
Yeah, no, no need, but you know, we do find a lot of our customers really prefer it. And so that, that could be added on as an option.
Okay.
Thank you. Did any other council members have any questions or feedback for Mr. Carkato or Mr. Welch?
I think I saw a question just about the having clean start.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Yep. And so I can, I can touch on that. So, you know, part of that reduction in scope that we mentioned that changed the cost for professional services was moving to a, what we call a clean start approach. I think it's a little bit of a misnomer, but really that has to do with our bringing over of historical data, specifically historical general ledger data, accounts payable data, utility billing data and any of the core financial data. So we do have, we do offer a couple of options at OpenGov. One option is to bring over all data for a set number of years into the GL suite, into the accounts payable suite, into the utility billing suite. And so we had originally in our proposal included five years of historical data. However, we also offer what we call the clean start approach, which still allows you to bring in all of the data, but we bring it just into our reporting suite. So you have that data still available. You can search it. You can report on it. You can drill down. But it's just not loaded specifically into the general ledger suite. And we find that provides a lot of benefits for our government customers. One being that it's really, really time-consuming to do a data conversion. And so if you have a smaller team or you don't have someone who's, who's specifically working on data conversion, that can really drag out and it, you know, it, it makes the project drag out a little bit longer where you could be focusing on deploying other critical parts of the software. The second is that is, you know, it adds a lot of cost. So we were able to cut that out. And I think it ended up cutting it down by about $25,000 or so for professional services costs. And then two, it also makes sure that, that, you know, you don't have any bad data getting into the system. So you ensure that when we go live, all the data is clean, it's fresh, and the reports all look clean and fresh as well.
Pro Tim Rubbington.
And just to comment, you know, we focus on the ERP and what it provides in terms of service software. But the reality is there's a company behind it. It's just such a pleasure to meet both of you, to see the expertise. We're a small town and to have, you know, this caring, dedicated folks come and help our city out. You know, we're excited to, to work with you. I know we're working through the contract process and all, but to me, this is just a really exciting time for us. Thank you.
And I would say we're, we're really excited to, if you stop, if you talk with the staff who's been involved in, in this review process, we really do view Duval as a strategic partner as well. You know, are really our entire executive team here. You know, are really our entire executive team here is knows about Duval, knows about the work that we've been doing, you know, all the way up to our CEO. And so, you know, really, the whole team is behind you to make sure this will be successful, and we're really excited.
Councilmember McHenry, was there anything you wanted to add or ask? Okay. Well, I'll take my turn now. I just, you know, a few years ago, the budgeting software and Town Hall software came live, and it was a very intriguing concept. And we started to look at it, recognizing that what we really needed is ERP software and lots of other connected solutions. And we had a demo from Andrew a few years ago. And it, the timing was just not right, but what we've seen with this company over the last three years is the incredible growth in attention to detail really relating to what government agencies need. And one of the things that really impresses me about the company is the number of former government employees that work for the company. That, to me, says there's a real commitment to providing the service that governments need as well as, you know, having that experience in the industry that is really valuable that a lot of other companies tend to miss. One of my favorite things about this software, besides all of the great things that are going to happen on the backend, and one of the things that attracted me to it to start having the city look into it further was really the transparency model. The fact that you can have a dashboard where the public can go in and look at every expense that you have, every part of your budget. The Town Hall features where you can automatically tell your story. And, you know, all of those public transparency models that are important to our community, but also very important to me personally as an elected official and as a resident. So, you know, this has been really a long time in the process. It took a long time to get the RFP up and going. But I can say, you know, having been involved in the process, there's pros and cons to every software. But one of the things that has stood out to me from the get go is the attention to detail and attention to customers' needs that I haven't seen in any other software or service that we use relating to technology at the city. So I'm definitely looking forward to the final negotiations to get this contract moving forward and looking forward to not just the benefit to our staff, but also the benefit to our community of having more of a window into everything that the city does financially. So I'm thrilled. In this process, it was, it's been long, but it's been thorough. And I'm really excited to see what OpenGov will do for our community. And while we are the first city in the state to take on the entire suite of of products, I think that's also going to give us a really clear perspective pretty quickly of the product as well. And so it is always a risk being the first out to adopt everything. There are other other communities that have already adopted the budget module. But for, I'm excited for us to be the first and be that cutting edge on the technology side with government accounting software in a way that we've never been able to be before, and it's, you know, less expensive than the competitors as well. So I think there's a lot of positive that's going to come out of this when we finalize a contract, and I'm very excited to see it move forward. Even though the process is going to be laborious and long, I think when it's all said and done, it's going to be very, very helpful for the city at large. So Laura.
I thank you, everybody, for the great questions, and thank you, Andrew and Mark, for the presentation and taking our questions, all to say, on the fly. I did want to just do a couple of the nuts and bolts. The one thing that we'll bring back for the next council meeting is an updated agenda bill that includes how we got to the cost that we are at now, which includes maybe a little bit just information on the clean start. We'll also bring back a contract payment schedule because we've had the same conversations with Andrew, and so we'll work on that over the next seven to ten days. And then just to add on a little bit to what the mayor said and some of the other committee members is, you know, this is a, this is a big step forward for us as a city. For me personally, I think what has been important to me and us receiving is that building, obviously, the building and permitting module. And that includes the conversion of all the historical permit data, so I'm really excited about that. But I would be, I'm in the community development department. But now switching the hat over to city administration, the budgeting and reporting tool is what finance really found as as a real asset moving forward. And then we all definitely agreed on the transparency, this what we call the citizen portal. We thought that was really important. We've been talking about that for several years. We're also adding purchase orders, which we haven't had before. We're also adding an employee self-service, which is is always helpful as well. It kind of helps save time on the finance administrative time. I also wanted to say the nuts and bolts is that we are within our budgeted authority. And so let me see, so we budgeted for three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for the biennium, and we're going to come in at about three hundred and seven thousand, so just kind of the nuts and bolts of that. And if there aren't any further questions, we'll get this wrapped up at the next meeting.
No, that that sounds good, and I don't have a question, just just to comment. And I, I don't want to, you know, beat a dead horse here, but I I'm, one of the things I'm so excited about with this is the security aspect. As I think a lot of us are aware, and certainly I'm aware coming from the software background, the sophistication of hackers these days is way beyond what most of us can even imagine. And a small city, small business cannot keep up with that themselves. We need a partner to help us, help us do that. And OpenGov looks like it's going to be our partner going forward, and I'm very excited to have you guys.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Well, thank you, OpenGov team. Obviously, we'll be in touch over the next couple of weeks to get this contract finalized and bring it forth for a final approval. Have a wonderful evening.
Have a good night.
All right, moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-one dash twenty-one B, motion to change the budgeted Public Works Maintenance One FTE position to dedicated parks worker and adjust the FTE splits and funding within the Public Works Operations Group accordingly for discussion and or decision. Mr. Lenishewski. And so this, for clarity, this is the second touch. So if council chooses to move forward tonight, we'll need to suspend the rules.
Good evening, Mayor and Council citizens. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. Thank you for for the opportunity to share this with you. It's, I know I've talked about it probably at nauseam to some of you on this conversion and trying to really strategically wisely configure how we deploy the work we do. I'm glad we were able to provide in the packet, you know, the the financial understanding of what we think we can save. Dana did verify and create most of those numbers after working with, you know, me on how we shift some of the employees around. I'm not sure there's a whole discuss the overall savings with some assumptions on benefits. Fifty-two thousand dollar range. I know that seems fairly insurmountable over a two-year period. Believe me, I had to look again and again and again. But when you take a wage for the parks worker, which is established in the eighteen to twenty and change per hour off of a maintenance one or maintenance two, where there's thirty and, you know, thirty-five dollars an hour, you know, nine dollars an hour, savings at two thousand and eighty hours a year, it's it's pretty simple math. So pulling the pieces of the crew in and out of that, still giving everybody enough pieces to be helpful and warrant the work when necessary, but removing the day-to-day simple task oriented work to a, you know, entry level parts worker. I I think the the math just speaks for itself. I know Joe and I have talked, again, at nauseam internally on on what this is going to look like, on how we deploy it. Parks, restrooms. I know that there has been concern on some of the finer details on, hey, can we deploy that type of work any longer? Is it covered in the in the job description, which we have amended, have had support from the Labor Group on as well as support from the Labor Group on converting this personnel type from a standard water or standard maintenance worker to a parks specific worker. So not to go too much into this. I think it speaks for itself. Flexibility is included as well as getting, you know, sorry, I'm looking to the right, which is where my screen is. Getting the work done, which we know we have an abundant amount of, not even to mention adding, you know, two parts in the future for some of the newer subdivisions that the city has as coming forward. So that's kind of my spiel. I know we talked about this fairly in depth at Public Works Committee. You know, garnering their support was important to me, and it was good conversation. Again, I think the the work plan, nothing changes on what we get done. It just changes on how we deploy it and the effectiveness of the type of work we get done with the skill set matchup personnel that we can then put in in other places where there's more technical capability and needs, simply put. So about all have, I'm sure there are questions, comments.
Right. Just council have any questions or comments or feedback for Mr. Lenishewski?
Comment.
That's a member Schaefer.
Thank you. Oh, no, I think that you you guys have done an excellent job analyzing this, making good sense of it. I know all of us have looked at the numbers to some some extent. I I I don't really see a downside, Steve, to tell you the truth. I I I I think you've kept the flexibility there. You've reduced costs as as well. So I certainly personally would like to see it approved.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Hi, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Remington.
Oh, Councilmember Napoli, did you have your hand up first? Sorry.
I, no, I thought Director Lenishewski thought he saw my hand up, and he made a comment about it, and I I did not, and I realized I had not been on mute. So
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you. I really appreciated the more in-depth discussion we could have with Public Works. I know that Finance Administration had looked at this. What I appreciate i- isn't just a very practical part. You got folks that are out mowing lawns, taking care of parks, and, you know, summer earning ten dollars more an hour, and there's this practical inequity that just happens in real life work. And so Steve was trying to address that. But more importantly, he has a certain vision to where we can move going into the future, and it's pretty tough when you're managing transportation, water department, you know, wastewater parks, all these things together and trying to mesh them all. They're still sharing workload, but I think this is a move in the right direction. Not having a parks department, but having a couple of folks dedicated, folks that certainly can be cross-trained and used in other things as well. But this is, I, you know, my my estimation, this is really a good move. It's the right time for us, and I think that in the future, we'll have even more discussions and things that we might be able to do to help strengthen some of the management and the processes there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. And if there isn't any other comment, would council like to suspend your roles this evening and move this forward so that Lenishewski can be begin recruitment?
Mayor Mike Remington, I move that we suspend our three-touch rule.
Second, McHenry.
Any discussion on suspension of the three-touch rule? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Now, would someone like to make a motion on the agenda bill?
Mike Remington, Mayor, I move that City Council approve our agenda bill twenty-one. I don't have the rest of my sheet I printed, sorry.
Twenty-one Agenda Bill twenty-one twenty-one B.
Twenty-one B, a motion to change the budgeted Public Works Maintenance Position FTE to a dedicated parks worker and adjust the FTE splits, funding them between Public Works Operations Group accordingly.
Henry.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Remington and a second by Councilmember McHenry to approve Agenda Bill twenty-one dash twenty-one B. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-one dash twenty-two A, and this is really just a recommended motion. Approve and authorize city administration to submit direct appropriation financial requests for SR two oh three corridor study, Third Avenue roadway design, Public Works wastewater treatment plant, office renovation, design and construction, and police station renovations. And I'll just kick this off. We we did discuss this at the Legislative Ad Hoc Committee last week. Our legislators, as always, once the draft budgets are presented or depending on the the annual process, appropriations forms are requested. We have an opportunity to ask for direct funding from the legislature for certain items. And through talk with staff, we are recommending that we put forth officially the two or three corridor study, our Third Avenue roadway design, since that is a top priority and will become a major arterial soon. Although funded in the budget, we'd like to try for getting at least some of our Public Works Building Renovation Design and Construction supported from the state as well as the necessary police station renovations to keep that building viable for the coming years until we have a government facilities plan and a plan to move forward. I have had conversations with Senator Dingra's office, and I do know that Highway two oh three, the study is high on her list. And our other legislators would like us to submit projects, and then the process is that we submit the forms officially to the legislature. The members accept or reject the request, and what they do is they look at all the requests that they're getting from jurisdictions or agencies or organizations within their district for the capital budget or the transportation budget, and then they determine which ones they're going to put forward. So we would like to submit these to all three legislative offices, Senator Dingra, Representative Goodman, and Representative Springer. If all goes well, we'll get at least two of these projects submitted by our legislators in both houses, and if things go really well, we'll get appropriations for some of it. So this is just kind of a, you know, formality, just to make sure everybody's on board and happy to answer any questions. Councilmember Lingle and then Councilmember Napoli.
Okay, um, first of all, this is great. The I I just wanted to get a little clarification on the facility F. That looks like that's something that's submitted to through an online portal. Is there a designated specific funding source within the state budget that that's attached to, or is this sort of just part of the whole legislative wish list approach?
It's part of, so we will be submitting the two transportation-related ones under the transportation budget, the two building-related ones under the capital budget per.
Okay, that's great. Okay, then my next question has to do with the corridor study. Point of clarification, we, I I like the fact that it's a collaboration with Carnation Monroe. Is Duval in the lead on that study?
Yes. So what happens there is we make the appropriations request for what we want to see in the study, how much money it costs, and then Wash Dot takes the lead.
Okay, okay.
So so Wash Dot. As far as the budget appropriation request, that's all us. That's that, if we get that request, it's going to be based on our efforts in Carnation and Monroe's. After the appropriations request, if it is received and approved in the budget, then the state takes the lead. But I have no doubt that we will be very involved in that in some form or another to make sure that they they do what's necessary to identify the needs.
Okay, and then I have one last thing, which is really a comment, which something we've we've talked about in procurement. I think, you know, it's a section that we've already, I think, reached all agreement on at the council level is, and this really pertains to Third Avenue, which we really need to figure out a process where council is more completely informed. And it's just an information item on the total development cost of a project right now in our capital budget for third. We really literally only have two line items, and obviously, that's not the way a a full budget is flushed out. Now, in that case, Director Public Works provided me with a copy of their grant application. So there was a little more information in their flavor, certainly was good for me to. was good for me to read, but that's the kind of information I think council needs to have as a project progresses. And, you know, right now he's not going to have all that information. So that's not the point of my comment. But as the stages of the development are flushed out, he will have that information. And we also, within that context, need to know what work we're doing in-house versus work that's being done by really more than one consultant. Which is, you know, that's just the way it works. The, the last point on that is I, I believe that the best way to do larger scale public works is working with the finally selected design team. You establish in their contract maximum allowable construction cost. Now, I noted that some of our consultants already are used to this practice. So this is not a new concept. It's certainly something I've seen before. So I wanted to provide that input now that with major, you know, I, I don't worry about, you know, the hundred thousand dollar, you know, police department renovation. That's not so much of a concern. But I do think in bigger projects, we have to have a full picture of the project as opposed to these sort of incremental pieces. It, it's, it's when you don't have a total picture, it's not conducive to overall supervision of expenditures. So I think this is great that we're going after money. It's awesome. And, but I did want to make the point that I will be looking for us coming up with a method of reporting total development costs at various stages in the evolution of major projects.
Thank you. And, and of course, once design happens, we'll have a much better idea of what total construction costs can.
Yes.
Be. All right. Anyone else? Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I, I also echo what Councilmember Lingle is saying is when we start talking about a project and we're just looking at the design, it's always better to have, you know, we expect a total development cost of, you know, whatever. Obviously, as you go down, you will have a more refined number. You know, you'll start out with, you know, pretty loose estimates and then it tightens up. So I do think it's always important to fully understand if we're asking for money to design something, what would we expect approximately the, the full project to cost? So that what, that wasn't originally my question, but Councilmember Lingle just got me excited about it. So my original question was you had mentioned in, well, I don't know who did this, maybe Director Lenishewski did it, that Monroe and Carnation were partnering. And so what I was wondering, are they also submitting their legislators? And we, no, okay.
So what we, what we, we're the lead. So we will submit it through our district. They are partners. And we're, we're really the most affected city. And frankly, our legislators in our district have more sway than the people in the 39th. So it's probably not even worth their effort to submit it to them. That said, we'll all be going to their legislators and saying, we need you to help us get this in the budget. So you only, you don't, different members from the same chamber don't submit the same projects. You have to choose one, one sponsor. And one agency has to be the lead on all the budget requests. So, but that said, I mean, you know, we've got, you know, Monroe definitely understands the need because frankly, their city and the city surrounding them are contributing to the issue. Because 522 isn't finished. So there's a lot of, a lot of moving pieces that all need to come together to have the biggest impact in the, on the region.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if there was some kind of formal buy-in, like they said, yes, we support it and they're going to speak out about it, or if it's just, you just kind of know that they.
They, no, they've, both, both cities officially said that we can list them as project sponsors. This is something we've been talking about for the last few years, and this is the year to go after the money.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Yep. Councilmember McHenry?
Is this something where you just submit them all and hope for the best? Kind of like you were saying, maybe a couple will get picked up? Or do you prioritize them at all? Like out of these here, the two that we would really hope to get, or is it just best to kind of give them all equal importance?
So there are two separate budgets. You have the transportation and the capital budget. As far as transportation, the quarter study is going to be the highest priority, and it's also the most likely to get funded. Because Third Avenue is design and construction. That's, while design is eligible in this year's transportation budget, it's less likely to get the support. And the two or three study could actually facilitate getting support for construction of that project later on. If we don't get support for it this year. As far as the capital budget, basically, you know, will be, the reality is just like when we went for the stage request a few years ago and were successful, that was a very unusual project for them to fund. The legislators will determine which ones they think have the best shot of moving forward. They may submit one, they may submit both. And if they submit both, as they go through the process, they'll work on trying to find the one that's most likely to move forward. And that'll be based on discussions in committee, based on what's going on in the legislature. And based on what the overall priorities of the budget turn out to be. So it is kind of, kind of like a lottery in a way, but the only successful way to get things funded is to submit and then work for it.
So if one gets submitted or accepted, whatever term that is, does it make you less likely to get it in the other one, two, or is it just a bit of a?
Not necessarily, especially with two different budgets and you're dealing with different legislators as well. So it all depends. I'm with the capital budget, since we have some serious HVAC issues to deal with in addition to needing renovations for public safety. And looking at trying to make sure our buildings are safe from future pandemics. I think that in particular, the police station, it's a lower cost, lower hanging fruit, easy win for folks. So I think that's going to be most likely to get funded if it gets funded. But we've, we try for it all and be happy with what you get.
Thanks.
And Mayor, too, on the transportation ones, we have to identify our priorities. So we put the two or three study first, the wrong party, and then if you didn't see that, Third Avenue was second.
Absolutely. And, you know, what, part of my hope with the two or three study, and I think is all of us can agree on, is that the reality is we need the data to guide policy changes because without those policy changes, we're never going to get the improvements necessary to accommodate the growth in Snohomish County. When we have more than 70% of our traffic coming from Snohomish County. That's the biggest issue. I've, I've had many conversations recently with the, the mayor of Redmond about that same issue happening in Redmond. A lot of the traffic that comes from Snohomish County through Duval claws up Redmond roads. And if they had a better system to go through, we may not have as big of an issue. And that, that ties in lots of other things with transit as well. So Mayor Portem?
Mayor, could you give us some context on this? I know we're into the legislative session and we don't have that many council meetings. Is it helpful to try to move? I mean, we're asking for money. So I think all of us agree that that's a good thing and trying to understand what the chances are. Is this something we should move forward sooner than later? I mean, could wait another meeting? I mean, this is our first touch. I don't know how council's feeling on trying to move this forward. But, you know, here we are in legislative session. Usually the sooner you get stuff in, they can evaluate it and get started, the better.
The transportation budget requests are due tomorrow. Capital budget is a little bit later on. So we're ready to go for 203. May, might have a little bit more work to do on, on Third Avenue, but as long as the transportation is invited tomorrow, I'm just looking for either consensus or a formal simple motion to say we all agree that these are the projects moving forward. And then we will submit as appropriate. Councilmember Lingle?
I'm comfortable. I mean, given what I've said with the TDC on their projects, which will get all sorted out in the future. I think you go for it now. I don't have any problem with these. I think these are things that we've either got in our budget plan already for CIP or have been discussed for a very long time. And so I am willing to make that motion on AB 21-22A.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second motion, Schaefer.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Lingle, a council, a second by Councilmember Schaefer to move forward with the direct appropriation financial request for the city. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes and we will get that all taken care of. Moving on to.
Sorry, I didn't know if we need to suspend our rules. The attorney isn't here tonight and I could, somehow I hear Daniel saying, well, do we need to suspend our rules on this?
I, I would say no, because it's, we're not.
Given direction.
Committing to anything. This is just letting it apply and it's not a grant, so there's no commitment. Councilmember Lingle?
Yeah, I just want to point something out, else out about this, which is that we have talked about each of those things multiple times within the last almost 60 days. So when I think about free touch, it's, it's, if we've never talked about it before, but these are all things we talked about in our budget context. And that's why I didn't think we needed a three-touch either. Or I would have said that first, you know. So I agree with the mayor.
Great. Thank you. And moving on to unfinished business, we're getting close to the nine o'clock hour. So I'm trying to move us along here. Agenda Bill 21-24D, resolution preliminary housing and job targets for 2019 through 2024 for discussion and or decision. Ms. Thomas?
So good evening, Mayor and Council again for this evening. Tonight, we're going to talk about the resolution that we worked on since the last council meeting. Essentially, what this resolution does is it conveys a message to King County and more specifically to the working group of King County. Looking at future growth targets for both housing and jobs. We did quite a bit of work, as you can see over the, since the, since the last time we've met, we drafted a resolution. What we did is we talked first high level about how we got to our conclusion, which is going through the Growth Management Act through PSRC 2050, the vision. Also, the regional growth strategy down to the countywide planning policies, which then we go through about every seven to 10 years. An adoption process of growth targets. And so what we did is we wanted to show what I call show our work to both the community, to ourselves, and then ultimately to the council, but also to our state representatives as well, because this will get conveyed to them as well. So they can see our work, because we do talk about infrastructure and improvements within this document as well. So as part of this resolution, we did, we also included an Exhibit A and an Exhibit B. Exhibit A is what I call show your work. So that has the numbers of our existing target, what we've accomplished, and that likely were to exceed that target. And then it also shows the conveyance of what it means to take in the additional 891 units that are being allocated as a preliminary number to the city. And how we're going to get to that number and based on what we have in our pipeline. That leaves a fairly small amount left after that number and that we can accommodate all of those housing units within our existing city limits without having to annex additional land. And then Exhibit B just shows our pipeline projects so that the community and the county can see that as well. And so I will, I can take any questions you have, but maybe just for kind of the, I'll say the good of the order. We are looking at an additional 891 units between 2019 and 2044 and 940, sorry, 994 additional jobs. And our regional caucus, we've talked a little bit about this, is the cities and towns. And amongst all of the cities within the cities and towns of King County, we're trying to take in just under 14,000 housing units. And so everybody looks at taking a percentage of those numbers. And so all of the cities are working with their, you know, with their communities, with their councils, and their planning commissions to see what they can accommodate as well. And like we've discussed before, some cities want less, some want zero, some want more. So we've, we've actually received a phone call asking if we had any additional units that we could give up for, for another city. And I, I did answer that question and the answer was no, because we don't have that many to give away. Actually, we don't really have any to give away. And so they'll look towards another city or a couple of other cities that they could ask for some of those units. It's very complex. And so hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to read the resolution and look at Exhibit A and B. You did get an updated Exhibit A today. We had one minor typo on it, but we wanted to make sure it was correct. So we resent that out today. And I definitely want to make sure and give a kudos, if I could give out kudos to the Land Use Committee for walking this path with staff, with Larissa and I. It's been a very, it's been a long process. You know, we really had to dig into the numbers and have a full understanding, looking at the methodology. And then the count, you know, the committee really helped me get this, push this over the, the finish line as well. So I wanted to personally say thank you. I can't say that this was a little bit of work. It was a tremendous lift for us to do in essentially a three-month process, especially during COVID. And not having a lot of opportunity to really work this through with our community. But another agenda item we'll be talking about, actually not agenda, my under administration will be talking about the community survey, because this is just a preliminary number that we're, that we're agreeing with. We have opportunity to further refine it and work with the county. But it is, it is based in solid math. So if there are any questions, Mayor, we can take those now, because we are looking at trying to pass this, this evening so that I can, so that I can give it to the county tomorrow.
And since we are running short on time, I think what I would like to ask for is if you have any changes or objections to anything in the language. Otherwise, if we can move it forward, that would be great. Councilmember Schaefer? You're on mute.
Thank you again. I, I, I don't have any specific changes. Laura and I think are discussing in more detail on, on Thursday. Is that right? Or, yes.
Yes, sir.
Well, thanks for spending the time with me. Mostly it's an education process on, on my part. So, so I'm looking forward to understanding this, understanding this better. But I don't want to delay anything because I understand all the time and effort that's gone into this and the need to get it basically moving, moving forward. So, so no, no changes requested on by me.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion? Councilmember Lingle?
I think that Councilmember Naplin should have the honor of this, of this motion. She has worked diligently on this as since the town meeting in 2017, and I think she should be able to make this motion.
Really sweet of you. But I do have to say, most of the work was done by staff. They've been attending these meetings and having to provide the numbers to the county and going back and forth. So I would say the bulk of the work was done by staff, but thank you for letting me make the motion. I, let's see here. I make a motion that we adopt, do I say adopt the resolution?
Approved.
Approved. There, I knew it didn't sound right. Approve resolution for preliminary housing and job targets for 2019 to 2044.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Lingle?
I'll definitely second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And I'll just say, one of the things that I, I appreciated about this resolution is tying it to infrastructure and concurrency, particularly where we don't currently have authority. And that's our biggest issue right now is not necessarily how fast our city grows, but how fast those cities north of us grow and the impact on us when transportation isn't fixed. So, you know, this is, this is a good step forward in our policy discussions at the, at the county and regional level as well. So thank you. Moving on to scheduled items, Mayor's report. First up, I'll just do a quick report on my activities lately. Obviously, we've been working on the legislative requests. We had our Association Washington Cities Board Meeting last week, which was really. We had our Association of Washington Cities Board meeting last week, which was really focused a lot on legislative session and upcoming conferences, trying to make decisions on whether or not we attempt to go in person or not. And I think everyone agrees that virtual this year is better. And then working with Chief Hurt and staff and legal on a new police chief contract. As we all know, Chief Hurt will be taking his vacation time coming up soon. So we will have an acting police chief and are hoping to move Lieutenant DeBock into that police chief position. So we're working on details of that and we'll hopefully have that ready for council executive session at our next meeting. Obviously, you already heard, I've been talking to Senator Dean Gray's office about capital budget requests. Also talking to other legislators about bills of concern and kind of sharing our, our cities' struggles with some of the language and some bills that have been coming forward. Also had an update, a meeting with Cass Huldeman, who's been our contractor for multiple years, actually former employee regarding summer stage. Trying to figure out what type of planning we do this year. And hopefully, we'll be bringing forth a contract. I'll be able to sign a contract with her again soon for planning of summer stage. Based on the recent data that's come out with most people being eligible for vaccinations at the first of July, the increase in supply and the change in phases, unless we have a major setback with one of the variants. I think that we're becoming optimistic that we'll be able to have a shortened summer stage series this year, starting in August, and bring the community together, even if we have to limit numbers. Right now, the outdoor gathering, I believe, is two hundred. If we are lucky enough to be at phase three by that point, I suspect we'll be able to have our normal event, considering it's outdoors. So we're keeping our fingers crossed for that and taking a chance in hoping that we can provide this community event this year after that one-year hiatus. We had our King County Public Health update this morning. I don't know if Mayor Portem Remington was on it this morning, so he may have more to add. But in general, King County's COVID numbers are going way down. We are, Washington State is the second lowest in the country, which is great news, but there's still big challenges. Challenges with getting vaccines out and the usual that we've been looking at. I think everyone knows that our schools are heading back. The kindergartners and first graders on back a few weeks ago, second and third graders were supposed to go back today, but due to weather and the unincorporated areas, they were not able to bring the kids back in person because of ICE. So I suspect tomorrow, hopefully, they'll be back in school. It'll be interesting to see how this goes, to see if we have infection rates increase as a result, or if families are good at following guidelines and a little more cautious now that their kids are back in school. Future meetings, we have the Sound Cities Association Board meeting tomorrow. Thursday, the mayors are meeting for, and county council people in Stonewash County are meeting for finished five twenty-two meeting. There's obviously a lot of work that needs to go and hopefully getting some funding in the transportation budget for that. And then, of course, Dr. Gangler already announced the state of the city. So I'll be giving the annual state of city address during the chamber meeting in March. And we didn't have one last year. I got sick and then we ended up in a COVID pandemic and everything shut down. So it just never got rescheduled for obvious reasons. Moving on to just kind of a quick update from the Legislative Committee and if Jennifer or, or sorry, Councilmember Napland or Mayor Portem Remington have anything to add. We've been tracking some bills. There's been some bills of concern. The first legislative cutoff was yesterday. So I haven't had time to fully analyze what's, what's still moving, what's not, but hope to bring that forward to the committee on Friday. To date, there hasn't been anything that we've had to take a strong stance on, but as things, the session progresses, we may need to. I think that most of the things we've been watching, there have been some changes that make it more palatable. But other than that, there's not a whole lot to report. There's some potential options for sales tax for parks, increasing levy authority for parks districts and other things that are more beneficial to the city than harmful. And with that, that's it. And does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Napland or Mayor Portem, do you have anything to add on the legislative side?
I don't have anything in particular to add, except I was at the Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting this morning and it sounds like the transportation packages, both coming from the House and the Senate are very much in flux.
Yes.
That is a lot of. Yeah, a lot of uncertainty there. So yeah, I wouldn't get too excited about all the details because they are a moving target.
It'll, it'll be, that'll be one of the budgets that passes one of the last days of session, if not on Sunday day. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief comment. While there are certainly things that we're supporting and encouraging with our legislators, there are some items that can be kind of confusing because, you know, Association of Washington Cities are supporting some things and we're a part of that. But some of those items are, are better for large cities and they don't fit Duval. So we're, there are a few items that we're just asking that small cities be exempted and they just add language that, you know, doesn't hurt us while trying to help larger cities. So we can still support the large cities with legislation and avoid things that, that most of those add financial obligations to us that we get very little benefit out of. So anyway, we'll do a better job of just trying to pin those down so you can see them. Because things are in flux, nobody needs to emotionally go on this giant roller coaster. So we'll just keep an eye on them and, and as they get closer, we'll, we'll really pinpoint those we need to have some very specific feedback on. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Somehow I muted myself. So, and thank you guys for your participation as well. It's nice to have a weekly meeting and go over stuff. And thankfully, this session has been very calm compared to previous ones. So moving on, we did not have any council reports, but we do have council committee reports. First up is finance and administration with Chair Remington.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be real quick with it. I was asked to, to be the chair and accept that. We're still working on the procurement policy that's divided into a matrix. Pretty easy to follow that, that specific matrix sets thresholds by which we're required to go out for bids on certain items. In a separate part, there's certainly the approval authority piece. There's approval at, at director level, approval at the mayor level, approval at council level. And so we're working through those before we bring them to, to council. And we're also looking at equal opportunity. This has to do with women, business enterprises, minority-owned businesses and disadvantaged businesses. There's certainly some state law that requires that we look at that at certain levels. But we want to be able to incorporate that into our own policy here and certainly give those businesses equal opportunity and, and do what we can to encourage their participation in our city purchases.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Chair Remington? Seeing none, we'll move on to land use with Chair Hoag.
Oh, I was selected to be the chair for this committee and I just love being on this committee. It's been so much fun. But I, I feel like Laura's already given an update on what we've been working on, but we did have two meetings last week. We've been working on this resolution that was just passed for housing and job targets. We also worked on a survey, but total kudos to the, the Land Use Committee, Councilmember Napland. Is amazing. You've just done such great work on the survey and the newest resolution. And Councilmember Langle and Laura's been very patient with all of us because we kind of dig in deep to these numbers and but thanks, Laura and Larissa have been wonderful to work with. So and that's it. We've been recording our meetings and everything's on the OneDrive. So if you wanted to look at some of the, the things that we've been working on, you can do that. Thanks.
Thank you. And next up is public safety with Chair Brad Nicky.
There's nothing to report this week, but we will be meeting next week.
Thank you. And next up is Public Works with Chair McHenry.
Thank you. So we met on February tenth and so we talked about the Tolt Water Main update. They're proceeding with design and easement acquisition and working with a consultant. There was a water comprehensive plan update, basically a Q and A session. And, you know, had the informational today at the Cal Government Facilities RFP, basically posted, reviewed timelines. There's been a pretty good interest so far with at least four to five solid consultants looking at it. And so we had kind of asked what would involvement be of council or the committee? And so, you know, I think the initial thoughts are having one council member on the target shortlist selection loop and then two council members on interviews and presentations. And I think it was also maybe said that it may, doesn't necessarily have to be people from the Public Works Committee if council, you know, if other council members are interested. The equipment purchase, the crack seal machine that we approved today and the consent agenda was talked about. Tank inspection, there were bids received. The, it's budgeted work. It's under the threshold. They've received three bids. So the contract's being executed. And there's a target three to four-year cycle for cleaning and inspection of the Crestview and Big Rock tanks. Duval Depot, probably really interesting to everybody. There's been one change order for bad soils in the foundation area. So that just basically means putting down harder material that can support the new deck. Footing and walls have been poured. I'm just super excited about anything, any update about this. I think we're all ready for that to be done. And also just to follow up, they're going to be rechecking for pests and prevention for that. So we don't have any more issues on that field. The the WWTP reuse pump project, the pumps have been built, electrical cabinet installation prepped. We were able to review the current development map for two thousand twenty-one, which is really interesting. And also reviewed recent construction approvals and different stages of developments throughout Duval. There is the staff update on hiring and reallocating the, the one position of the parks position, which we talked about today as well. Then there's an updated two thousand eighteen capacity report for parametrics. And that's about all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Chair McHenry?
No, no questions. Just, we, we also talked about the, and I confess, I don't know what kind of trees they are, but the trees in Big Rock Park. And making sure that they continue to be healthy, which I think is a nice, not very nice focus on our, on our park, because they are, they are indeed iconic.
Yeah, I had asked because it had come up in the Tree and Sensitive Areas Committee a long time ago. And so I just randomly remembered it because I had been at Safeway that morning and saw those big, beautiful. Yeah. And so we just talked about getting an update on, there had been talk about a pavement removal plan, but they're working with an arborist to make sure we don't shock them or do anything to hurt them. So it's just, that's being worked on or followed up on.
Thank you. And do we have any reports from ad hoc committees this evening? Councilmember Hoag?
I feel like I gave this earlier, but I, maybe it was in the Cal, but we did meet, Councilmember McHenry and I met with our attorney and reviewed the ethics policy again. So we're hoping to bring that back to the next meeting. Probably the Cal or, well, the attorney would like to be there. So maybe we could, if we could do it at a council meeting, that would be helpful. So so that's it. I feel like we accomplished a lot visiting with him. So.
And I think we're having one more meeting, you said, with the mayor as well, just to kind of fine tune it a bit before it comes back to council.
Thank you.
I forgot about that. Yes. I hope you can be there, Mayor.
I haven't, haven't received an invite yet, but if, if I can, of course I will be. And I'm really happy to see this move forward. It's been a long time coming and I know you've, you've been working on it for a long time, Councilmember, and it's much appreciated. It was one of my last torches as a council member. We didn't get it done and now we're, now the council's getting it done. So I'm thrilled. I'm thrilled that you're the one to take that up. So moving on is the administration update by Ms. Thomas.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council and those that are community that are hanging in with, with us. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I'm going to share the community survey that the Land Use Committee has been working on for the last probably about three weeks. So hopefully, everybody can see that. I might have, you'll see my, my mouse is going to run. So sorry about that. We did get a updated survey into the council packet, but we did get some early feedback, which is great. And so you'll see kind of our color coding, which is yellow equals revised, gray equals proposed to remove, and then green are the new comments. And I will be tag teaming this with Councilmember Napland, but I can't see her when I'm in presentation mode. So Mayor, if you can let me know when she'd like to, when Councilmember Napland would like to help chime in, that would be great. And so one thing that we've done over the last week is Councilmember Napland volunteered to put it into our survey format. And then many of us have tested it multiple times. And she also asked, I believe, at least one council member outside of the committee to test it as well. And so I think we're getting really close because we definitely like to get this issued, hopefully, you know, towards the end of February, because we're going to put it in our utility newsletter as well, so that they can, you know, so that's one of the ways we're going to push it out. So I won't, hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at this, but I thought what we would do is we'd focus in on the revisions in the gray area, which is proposed to be removed in the new. So we did remove a handful or so of questions because we were up at, I think, over twenty-five questions by the time we got input from council at the last meeting and then also from Planning Commission. So I'll go ahead and scroll down. So one of the new additions is I do not live in the city of Duval because we definitely are trying to get those that live in, those that don't, and then to tell us where obviously they live. It's a great addition. This is one of the questions that we are proposing to remove. Over the last ten years, do you feel commercial retail industrial has developed? And that's, so we're looking at removing that question because we did feel like this is focused more on residential growth. We're looking at taking out six, seven, and eight as well. And again, this is related to non-residential here. We all thought, like I, we, we liked this question, but we thought, you know, everybody is going to say yes to it. So we should just make that assumption. So number seven, should the city encourage King County improve the safety and capacity of its roads? Yes, we all know that the answer is yes to that. And just to shorten the survey, we decided to recommend to remove that. And then the same thing for should we encourage the State Department of Transportation to improve safety on SR two oh three? We've removed that question. So now we're getting down to some new, some addition. So we wanted to add some clarification based on some council feedback. So within the city of Duval, what road improvements would you like to see happen before developing out more housing within the city? You know, such as sidewalks, safety improvements, roundabouts, pedestrian crossings. So kudos to the council member who helped us add that in. And then number twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I know you can't see me. Do you mind? Could you go back up to that one? Because there was actually a new question. So go up again, just a tiny bit more. So question number nine is asking if we, you know, they think that we should improve the roads prior to more development. And the suggestion from the council member who responded was should we ask why they answered yes or no here? And so we were trying to formulate a question. I, I'm going to fill the beans. It was Councilmember Schaefer. So he may want to elaborate. But I think it's a great idea. But I just, I think we accidentally skipped over that one.
I am going to say, I think there should be a little bit of context to that question, too. Because when you, when you see what people say about transportation, there's a lot of people that don't understand that we have absolutely no control over the county and state roads. So we might want to put a little context in there. And that can be just a brief statement that Laura could put in, just to clarify and, and still get the, the right opinion.
I can't tell Mayor if we have consensus on that because I can't see everybody.
I'm seeing absolutely no response.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll respond. Mayor, can you maybe explain a little bit more of what you would like to see here then as far as, you know, as far as clarification of this question?
Well, I think, you know, most people in the community, well, I shouldn't say most, but a lot of people in the community do not understand that once you leave, go south of Safeway that, um, or cross the Woodinville Duval Bridge or, or get onto 124th, that they're in jurisdictions that the city has no control over. Our control, um, is limited to advocating for projects and working to change legislation. And so I think, um, you know, it's a really important piece because it, it also ends up leading to what we're working to do. And that's trying to get the legislature to change how, um, how we plan for transportation in particular. Because the GMA has failed when it comes to, um, to acknowledging that while the goal was to have people living and working in the cities, in the same cities that they live and work. The reality is that has not happened. Duval used 20 years ago when I moved here, Duval was the affordable city. Now it's Monroe and Sultan and Goldbar and Snohomish. So people are moving farther and farther out, but still working at the same job centers. So, um, but as we look at, um, the study that was done last year, more than 70% of the traffic that comes through Duval every single day is from Snohomish County. And so, you know, making sure that we're focusing on the right questions and information, I think is really important, um, to guide us and as well as to guide our, um, advocacy strategy uh, at the regional and state level.
Okay, good. And I think Laura cap captured it well with, you know, providing some kind of context that some of these roads are outside of, you know, Duval's direct jurisdiction.
And, and I think this is a no brainer. We all know that everybody's, everybody thinks that these roads need to be improved before more development. But part of that question is if we were, for example, to not develop anymore, would our transportation problems continue to get worse? And the answer is yes. You have over a thousand homes going in in Sultan. And there's huge developments going in out there. And those people will be commuting on highway two, highway two, highway two, three and 522 to get to and from work. Councilmember Lingle.
Yeah, I would, I would just, uh, add one thing about when we were going through and editing, uh, the survey. One of the, uh, challenges was making sure it would be a survey that people could quickly do, uh, including on their phone. And when you look at some of the questions we were proposing to remove, the agreement was these were all good questions. And, um, and kind of, and the thought was that, uh, there's interest from the planning commission as an example, wanting to do an economic development survey. Um, there's going to be other opportunities to still use these questions. It, 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 because there's only so much we can accomplish where a survey will be quickly done, easily done on different types of devices, that type of thing. So as we look at removing things, I don't want people to think that we won't get at that information or it won't be sought in some other committee because I think they're all really good questions. It was just a dilemma of how much can we accomplish in one survey that was growth related primarily?
Okay, I'll continue to, to roll us down the list. And so you can see, uh, 12, 13 and 14. We agreed that we should remove them because the survey was getting really long. We really wanted to get this information, but we just didn't think that this was the right, uh, the right survey to do it in. Cause we all took the survey and when we had 25 questions, it just took, it took too long for us to get through it. And then, uh, when we had too many bullet points or asking ranking, when you're doing it on a phone, it looks very differently. And so I'm really glad that we actually did that Jennifer, or sorry, Councilmember Naplin put, uh, the survey together so that we could start to test it because that really changed our perspective as we went, as we went through this process. This one is just that, uh, was removed as well because this just was part of how many days a week do you think you might go back to work? Or not, you know, to, to commute outside the city. One of the comments that we got, which is really good because it's always about consistency is when, you know, are we going to say decade, five years, 10 years? And making sure that we're consistent across the board. So heard we will, we will make those changes. Number 17, uh, the addition of, you know, has, uh, how is your quality of life been changed? For better or worse? And then it's open ended and then put it for the last decade. And then that way we could remove number 18. So it'll just be in one open ended question. And I think that was, I think that was a good comment as well.
Right. And I just wanted to support that and say, I, I was also thinking that when I looked through. So thank you for adding that.
Yes. Uh, number 19, uh, so actually let me just, sorry, let me go ahead. Just do that. That way I can start to get things saved and take them back to the, um, committee this week. Uh, number 18 is rank your concerns related to current and future growth. One of the questions I guess was if none imply, can you skip this question? You can skip any question you want. You don't have to answer every, every question. Move the items in the list up or down by dragging. So that's how this, that's how this particular poll works. That's what we can do. Um, given the technology that we're using.
I have a comment if I could.
Yes.
So on this question, my only concern is if somebody skips this question, it is possible that this list is already in the priority ranking that they agree with. So it will give a certain set of data. And if they just say, oh, I don't like it or I want to skip it. I don't know that you could differentiate between that. And if someone agreed with the order it was in. So I guess what I was wondering to do with this, because it is a tricky, um, you are limited in forms and what you can do. So it's really hard to figure out how to do it. I was wondering if you could just possibly add a question after this one that's an open text. And I don't know how to word it, but you know, because my thought is what about people who have no concerns or different concerns that are not listed there? So maybe if you just added a question saying, if you have no concerns related to current and future growth, or you do have concerns that were not listed in that question, could you please explain here? Or give people an opportunity to say, yeah, I don't agree with anything in that question. Cause I don't know that you would actually see that if they just skipped it. It would show that they agree or ranked them in the order that you naturally have them occurring on that question. Does that make sense?
Yep. And we are at 9:30. So we will need a motion to extend the meeting.
I move, we extend the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion by Councilmember Henry, a second by Councilmember Naplin. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Great. Thanks. We can move on.
Councilmember McHenry, this question has almost been the death of me. I have tried redoing this question. I created it in a different format where each one, you could say how important it was, but then each question, it came up again and again and again. And when you did it on a phone, it was like, took so long to get through. And finally, I just said, if we keep it to five, you can rank it pretty easily. But the dilemma, what if you don't have any concerns? If you don't touch it, if you don't touch it and try to move anything, it doesn't record your answer. It's as if you didn't answer it. But now I hadn't even thought of this. If you look at it and you say, hey, it's already in the order I like, your answer isn't recorded if you don't initiate touching it. Anyway, I, I don't know how to solve this. I.
I wrecked that part. But I think you could just add an open ended question after just kind of hitting on that. You could even add something. Um, I don't know. I, I don't know. It, it's really tough. There's no perfect solution on that one.
The one good thing is that if, if it gets recorded and you didn't intend each time, from my understanding is they, they, it randomly sorts what is displayed to you. And so anyway, it's not like it would skew the results one way versus the other, because it's already sorted with certain things at the top. It's randomly generated.
And anyway, Likert was not the best solution then to have a, um, really important down to not important at all, or something like that. Did, did that feel too?
I mocked it up and had people take it. And overwhelmingly it was like, no, that's clumsy. And it became on a phone, especially on a, on a regular computer. They're all lined up neatly and you can see all of them at the same time and rank them. But when you do it on your phone, if each item in the list comes up, it's its own separate question with its own separate things. And it, everyone's like, oh, it's getting too long. It's, yeah. Can you do a ranking? And I'm like, ah, it started with ranking and now I.
My only last suggestion on this question, because it is very difficult, would be to leave it as not a ranking, but just an open ended question. Could like, explain your concerns related to current and future growth. It would be, you're not going to get clear cut, nice high graph, graphics from that question, but you could always in parentheses say, for example, loss of small town feel. You could list them as examples, but then force people to write their own answer.
So to be devil's advocate here, the reason I think we've kind of stuck with this list of five is it's the same list that had been presented in a prior survey and people were asked to rank them. And so it would be super interesting to see if the results changed. And so I think that's why we finally decided, let's just stick with the same five that had been used in a prior survey that people were asked to put them in order. And so we could have that comparison because I, there is another question that asks if you have any other concerns, I think further down. I'm trying to remember what we cut or didn't cut. If we don't, obviously we should have that question, but I believe we do further down.
I think we do as well. Yeah.
There's an open end.
Uh, Mayor and Jennifer, Mike Cremington, just a suggestion on this.
Yeah.
So when we ask this question, right at the top is always loss of small town feel and increased traffic. So put those two at the bottom and force people to move them.
What I was saying is it randomly generates the list and.
Oh, every time?
So everyone, they will get them in a different order. And it actually was better. So it's not accidentally skewed by defaulting. Does that make sense?
No, I get it. Yeah.
The other thing that we found when you take it on like, so I have, like, I took it on my, um, personal phone. And I took it also on my city cell phone. And my city cell phone has a much smaller screen. So when you had more than like so many choices, you couldn't even really drag up and down because you couldn't see what, you were dragging, then it would move, reprioritize your items. So it was, yeah, so that's, it was interesting. That's why, that's why we were making changes.
This is why they hire professionals to do that.
Exactly.
Yep.
So I think we'll go back to the committee and figure out how to do 18. I kind of, like, I, I really do like this, you know, rank them, but I also see the power of giving them some hints of what it would be and just asking it as an open ended question. So we can talk about that at, at the committee, at the next committee meeting.
The, uh, the other consideration here is all open, quite, open ended questions are going to take, uh, more work on our part, including guesswork on how to correlate those, um, and what people really meant when they responded to the open ended question. So that, you know, that's some work that I, you know, I volunteered to, to, uh, to, to help with because I'm so interested in this. But, uh, nonetheless, it, it will be an effort on our part. And like I say, there's, well, there'll be some guesswork involved as well.
Yeah, we all, I, I can, thank you. I guess we will use the power of council, um, even more because this, there, there are so many open ended questions that it would take staff, uh, quite a bit of time that we don't have honestly allocated for this task. But we kind of agreed as a group that we would make it a group effort. So, um, if you want to join, um, the fun, then we would definitely look at that. Uh, I would definitely say that as, as a staff member, the more open questions we have, the, um, the more nervous I become.
Yeah.
And because you're right, it's how do you correlate them and the, and the statistical ability. But I think we all went in knowing that it wasn't going to be statistically valid and that we were going to have to make some assumptions at the end, at the end of the day. Uh, so we'll just keep moving a little bit. So we did eliminate, uh, a hand, well, not a, not quite a handful of the responses, the options. Uh, number 19 has been reworded a little bit to what policies or priorities can the city initiate to improve or maintain your quality of life? Please choose five that are most important to you. Um, so we didn't make a whole lot of changes here, but we did add on to the, um, create policies for larger lot development slash lower residential density. So that's, that's one of, that's the addition.
That was a suggestion from Councilmember Schaefer. And it's, because some people, when you talk about larger lot development, that doesn't mean anything to them. But if you say lower residential density, it means something. So just, I, I agreed with it. Um, anyway.
And then, uh, yeah, there's a lot of options for 19. So you can, you can see that. And there's an addition, uh, invest in traffic, uh, pedestrian safety improvements. Uh, we eliminated number, uh, 21. Um, and that's partially because we also have open in questions to address, um, anything that's remaining. What else do you want to share with us? So the last two are open ended. What are your concerns with limiting, uh, residential growth in Duval? And then number, the last one, is there anything else you would like to share with us related to growth? So I guess what we're looking for is just, uh, you know, like a final nod because we're, our plan is not to bring this back to, um, council. Um, it's really to, to finish it up in our next land use committee meeting and then get it prepared and start to get it pushed out.
So one thing you might want to add, um, because this could be a good way of calling members for the next comp community group as far as the comp plan update is, do you have interest in being contacted by the city to participate in growth related conversations? And if so, provide, you know, a contact place and we can start calling a list, um, for potential community members to serve. When we start that process next year. And it also gives us an opportunity, if there's some follow-up, um, that staff or, or we need to do with some of those people. Then it gives us an option if they're willing to provide their contact information.
I just wanted to say too, that the suggestion to add, if, if one of your concerns wasn't one of the five that you had to rank, an open ended question to add any that wasn't listed. I don't think there is a question quite like that. And so, um, anyway, I just went and looked. There was a question that sort of asking if there was anything else you wanted to mention, but, um, anyway, thank you, Councilmember McHenry. That's a really good suggestion.
Uh, Mayor Mike Cremington?
Yes.
Uh, on that last question, I agree. It's so nice to have a list of folks. The challenge I've found with that type of question is someone says, hey, this is great. My name is Mike Cremington. Here's my contact. I'd be happy to help. But then you never hear back from anybody. And I don't know if we're obligating ourselves to get back and say, uh, does that make sense? I mean, some expectation that if I give you my name and number and I want to participate and I never hear from you. Sometimes it turns into almost a negative.
Yeah. I mean, and I think to that point, I think we can wordsmith a little bit to make it clear that it's a possibility, but not a guarantee, just based on, on how, how things go. Because we all know that, that a lot of unexpected things keep happening and we're not getting to do, um, as much, as much direct community outreach as we've wanted to the last couple of years, um, due to COVID and many other things. So I think we can wordsmith it. And if it doesn't sound right, then we can trash it if, if folks are agreed to that. But I think we can wordsmith it to a point where there's no commitment, but it provides an opportunity for a connection. If and when that opportunity arises. So like, for example, you know, this could be as simple as sending an email out. So like, for example, you know, this could be as simple as sending an email out to folks asking if they're interested in being involved in the community comprehensive plan committee or something like that as well. Um, so that there actually is some level of follow up. But to your point, I think, yeah, it does need to be wordsmithed.
We're going to creep back up to that 25 questions again. We worked so hard to cut it. No, it's okay. It's just, it's funny how there's just so many questions. I really, there's, the questions we cut were painful, but, um, anyway.
But can be put into other surveys as well. So I mean, it's, they're all good questions.
Yeah. Really, we, I think the worry is that you could get someone going through this and they might abandon it if they feel, um, it feels, they just, you know, that was the other thing is we'd have some more information, like to get more information about what kind of routes we have and different things like that. If they follow a link and go off, they might not come back. And, um, one suggestion I got from councilmember McHenry and something, um, councilmember Schaefer said was maybe at the beginning of the survey, just give a heads up of how long you expect it to take. There are just so that people don't get halfway through and be like, I don't know how much longer this is going to take. Forget it, you know? So I think we might want to add something like that at the beginning, just, um, or maybe in the email that goes or in the utility bill, just give people a heads up. It's a 10 minute survey or and that's why I was hoping I, I send it out to council and, um, I'm hoping people will take it because it gives you the approximate amount of time it takes for people to take it. And then I could get a, a good idea on how long.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question about speaking of the utility bill. I don't remember if I brought this up before. So the newsletter in the utility bill, when it gets emailed out, is an attachment. And I've always thought it would be really nice for something to be embedded in the body of the email. But I understand that that takes a higher level of understanding of some HTML and we're probably not at that point of understanding. But in this case, when we have a survey, can we, I mean, I'm guessing it's some sort of email mail merge used to formulate those emails, or maybe it's something else. But is it, is there any possibility to put extra text in the actual body of the email in a way that's not labor intensive for staff?
I might be able to answer that a little bit. Um, I think the emails come through merchant transact, which is the service that we use to do e-billing and accept payments, uh, through the web and everything. Uh, I know Stephanie's, our utility billing clerk, there is limited amount of, uh, extra text that she can add. We could find out if maybe she could just add a link to the survey, um, in there that would be an actual live link. Is that kind of what you were thinking?
Yeah, because honestly, I mean, my, my husband's the one, the utility goes to his email. And I mean, even just last year, I think he was like, there's a, there's a newsletter. What newsletter? Like, he doesn't click on the extra attachment. So I think especially when there's something really important, uh, realizing. And I think just talking to other people lately who had no idea about the last survey that we did, when did I see that? You know, but we posted on Facebook and we put it here and there, but it's just not quite reaching as many people as we could hope. And I think we could always work to improve that. So whatever we could do to put it in an email or maybe separately too. If we have an email list that people can sign up for on the website, I don't know if we collect those or not. Or if we have a separate list that we can just send a separate email, uh, in addition to the
We do have the list, I mean, of people that are subscribed to updates to the website. So those people that are subscribed to updates to the website, as long as it's posted on the website, should automatically receive it.
It's different for each thing. So it's not just anytime the, the website gets updated, it's certain things. So if they're subscribed to the agenda center, then they get those updates. If they're subscribed to the calendar or the jobs module, then they get those updates. So, but one thing I noticed is that, um, the mayor from, uh, Monroe posts a notice on his Facebook page whenever he creates the new, uh, I don't remember what he calls it, Monroe Monthly, Monroe Weekly. And it gives like a very short snapshot of the items that are included in the newsletter and then provides a link directly to the newsletter, which we do put the newsletter on our website. So perhaps that's something that our PIO could do through our Duval Facebook pages to kind of, whenever we send a newsletter out, say, hey, check out your newsletter. Here's what it contains, kind of thing.
Yeah, and I already post my monthly mayor's message every month, so, um, do that part. But yeah, we can do that. Councilmember Lingle?
Yeah, one, the, the issue of distribution of the survey was discussed in the committee. And, um, we had a number of thoughts about that. And in part, using our own, uh, relationships out there, you know, making sure people know about the, uh, the link. Um, homeowners associations are a good way. I've, I've already talked to our homeowners association here and they said they're gonna, you know, send something out saying, hey, you know, this survey is available, participate in this survey. You know, the neighborhood night out list is always a place I think worth going to. The police department is so, does such a good job with maintaining that. But, you know, if we, we want a diverse cross section and everybody doesn't, you know, read the newsletters or even go to the Facebook page. I recall when we did the last survey, I was surprised, um, at the, the lower number that we're really accessing city information. So I think we're just going to have to, as a group, you know, try really hard through our own relationships to encourage people to participate. HOAs are the, a good way. Um, either they engage with it or they don't, but you know, Taylor's Ridge is 144 households, if even half of them participate because the HOA encourages them to do that. That's a good thing.
Councilmember McHenry?
Mayor, I think it was you that had an idea about creating a code, a scan code and of the, of the survey's, uh, link and then having some flyers put up around local businesses. Is that something we could still accomplish, you think, with this survey?
I think that would be super simple.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Councilmember McHenry.
Oh, a QR code. So we
Oh yeah, we always do QR codes.
One, one of the suggestions I had at the last meeting is that, um, we, you know, print out little squares of the QR code and the survey and the deadline and, um, distribute them to local businesses to pass out, um, and potentially ask Red Pepper, for example, to put it on their boxes. They do a lot of advertising that way. And I know that they're doing very well right now. So as last I've heard, so that could be, um, a good way to reach a, a different cross section as well.
To save paper, I don't know if we need them to be passed out, but if we just laminate some for businesses to put up near their cash register for like however long until the survey closes, that might, because then people can scan it immediately with their phone.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, printing, you could print eight to a sheet, so it would be pretty cheap. It probably only costs five or 10 bucks to, to print, um, plenty for the city. So I don't think cost is really an issue there.
Are there, are we, are, are there any other questions? Are you all comfortable letting the land use committee, uh, finish this up and getting it pushed out? Probably like the first week of February, maybe even next week.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you all. And with that, we do not have an executive session. So unless there are objections, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.